Recording in progress.
You got me right on time. Appreciate it. Welcome, everyone. Whoops, this is Board of Equalization. Where's Eric? Eric, would you like me to conduct that, or can you do that online?
If you wouldn't mind, Jared, that would make like viable leisure.
Okay. Under the direction of the Chair, Eric Strunberg, I'll conduct the Board of Equalization meeting. Today is December the third, 2024. We are located at the County Building on the third floor in the Council Chambers. It is 6:00 PM when we started. It is now 6:01. So we'd like to do a roll call. We have our County Attorney, Scott Broadhead. Thank you for being here. Kendall Thomas, equally, thank you for being here. Councilman Hamner is present, and Councilman Hoffman. We have excused Councilman Wardle. He's on... Yeah, he's on council business in Washington DC. We have our County Manager, Andy Welch here, and Assistant County Manager, Brittany Lopez. Nikki, thank you for being here from Clerk's Office, and many of you out in the audience, thank you for being here. That will bring us down to number three. That is approval of minutes on the June 4th, 2024 Board of Equalization Meeting Minutes. Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes that Council would like to bring up? If not, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Hearing a motion from Councilman Hoffman, and a second from Councilman Thomas for approval. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those that may oppose say nay. Okay, new business is to elect a new Chair for the Board of Equalization of 2025. Is there any nominations for Chair?
Wardle?
Second.
There's enough of the tradition that I hear Eric is the Chair of all of them because he wasn't here last year.
I don't think he's the Chair of all of them.
A bunch of them.
You guys, I'll take your nomination if you're serious about it, or we can just status quo to where we're at.
Once a year?
Once a quarter.
Once, once a quarter.
Can Wardle handle that?
That's a stretch.
No, he asked not to be nominated, but if that's your nomination, I'll take it.
I'll take the nomination. He's not here to defend himself.
Okay.
He didn't have a problem with that.
Eric, did you want to stay Chair or no?
I'm fine to stay, but do you want to do something different?
Okay, obviously my nomination then.
And you want to make, I'll make, okay, Eric, if you're okay, then I'll make nomination for Eric Strunberg to stay Chair. Is there any other nominations?
But I'll second your nomination to nominate Eric.
Then by acclamation, we'll, if there's no other nominations, then, do I need to close it? I didn't even open it. All those in favor of Eric, say aye. Aye. All those that may oppose, say nay. See, even Eric voted for himself, so we're good. Thank you. Thank you, Eric, for doing that. That'll bring us down to the exception request for property taxes owed by Twilla City. Joy? Joy's our assessor, so Joy, thank you for being here.
You're welcome. We had a property owner come into the office, and so I'm responding to the request. She had the property tax bill of the entire amount. Twilla City, an exempt entity, bought part of her property for city purposes, and she's asking that she not pay the entire bill, that the property taxes that are owed by Twilla City, who now owns that portion of the property, that they be responsible for that, since they are an exempt entity. I'm asking that you exempt those taxes that are due for the portion of Twilla City. Property only owner will pay their portion of the property taxes. Twilla City will be exempt if you so choose.
So let me see if I, help me understand this. They bought it at a certain time. Anytime previous to that, the owner will pay that. Anytime forward, then that's Twilla City.
Yeah. They, they did the portion, the acreage of the property that, that they owned for the timeframe that they owned it, yes.
And that's the 3321?
It is. And I'll let you follow that through with the vote when Allison gets done with all of the Board of Equalization, if you so choose.
Okay. We can take that all together, right, Scott or Nathan? Okay. And then on the 2024 Tax Abatement, Allison McCoy or auditor.
All right, Council, before you, you have a detailed list of property owners who receive property tax abatements in the year 2024. This includes our blind citizens, Circuit Breaker, which is anybody 66 and above, our indigent abatements, which is anybody 65 and below who has experienced a hardship, and also our veteran citizens. I did want to just touch on it, that that's 1,937 citizens and an abated amount of just over $3.8 million, which represents an 8.7% increase in our abatements over last year at this time. Our biggest areas of growth compared to last year are in the Grantsville and Stansbury area. And so this is a very helpful program for those who need it, and so we're happy to assist those and grateful to have this program. So, any questions on, on this?
So it's obviously increased. Do you foresee continuing in that?
Interesting that you say that, because we actually had a discussion about this in our office today, and I actually do foresee an increase in it for a couple of reasons. First of all, as the baby boomers age into that 66 and older category, there will be more. And then the legislature does increase the income limit every year, so right now the, the income limit is $40,840, so anybody that's 66 and over that makes less than that amount qualifies. And so as that amount increases and as our seniors increase, more people will qualify, so.
Okay. Those limits are set state?
By the state, yes.
Any other questions, Council?
One question, Allison. I mean, you had mentioned why there's the, the increase of this. Is there also, I guess, are we educating folks more about this? So they're aware of it? Or is there any... Is that what you believe?
So in the past, we have gone to the senior center. This year, we did not go to the senior center, but it is something that we do like to, typically, we do like to go out and reach out to the senior center and the veterans and, and do that extra effort, so. The state does reimburse us for a portion of the Circuit Breaker part of it, so we do get a refund for a portion of it, but not all of it. So... It's not a percentage. It is, it, so there's, on this, if you look, we would get back $348,988. Yeah. Any other questions on that part of it?
Any other questions? And entertain a motion?
So moved.
Hearing a motion to approve the Twilla City and the approval of the 2024 Tax Abatements that have been discussed. Right, Councilman Thomas, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second from Councilman Strunberg. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those that may, thank you, and all those that may oppose, say nay. Okay, that will bring us down to D on the 2024 Board of Equalization, Allison McCoy.
All right, Council, we, this is the wrap-up or the culmination of a very busy few months for the Assessor's Office and, and the Auditor's Office. What you have before you is kind of the summary of the statistics. You can see that 604 parcels were officially appealed or, or revalued or worked with, with the Assessor's Office. That represents 1.87% of all parcels, so I'd say that that's a pretty good average for the Assessor's Office if they get 98.2% of the values correct in the, in the county. So I think that that's pretty good. The average impact of those adjustments for residential homeowner was $110. That's the, the average tax that was adjusted that the homeowner would pay, and on a commercial property, that it equates out to about $5,484. Now, we're dealing with some very large properties in that, and that includes like, things like Clean Harbors and our, our friends out in the West Desert, so that kind of skews those averages a little bit. As far as the value, the total value that was adjusted, it, the percentage is 0.76% of the total value in the county. So they almost had 100% of the value right, but just not quite. And then as far as the total tax, tax impact to all of our entities, shared across all of the entities, that was $732,000. For the county's portion, it was $87,000. So I just want to give kudos to the Assessor's Office. They had a huge job. There's 32,380 parcels in the county. It's a tremendous amount of work for them to have to go through and value every piece of property every year. But they do a great job. They're willing to work with all 604 property owners to make sure that they get it right. They want to get it right. And so this just represents that amount of work from July till now. So there still are a few that they're working with. That's why we have these meetings quarterly. We'll bring some of those back as, as they continue to work with those property owners, but great job by, by the Assessor's team, so. Any questions?
Any questions from Council? There's no action to be taken on this.
I do need you to approve those.
If you would like for us to approve those or table them, but I would suggest we may vote on those, so open for, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Hearing a motion from Councilman Hoffman for approval. Is there a second? Hearing a second from Councilman Thomas. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those that may oppose, say nay. Sounds unanimous. That will bring us down for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Hearing a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. We are adjourned at 6:12.
Recording stopped.
Just go.
We're two minutes late already. We are, we are running behind.
We're asking so many quick...
I think that was you.
Thank you.
Recording in progress.
Welcome, everyone, to the West Erda Improvement District Meeting Agenda. We are located at County Building on the third floor in the Council Chambers. It is December 3rd, 2024, and it is 6:13 PM. Roll call. We have our County Attorney, Scott Broadhead, and as far as Council, we have Councilman Thomas, Councilman Hamner, Councilman Hoffman, and Councilman Strunberg on Zoom, and Councilman Wardle is excused. We have our County Manager, Andy Welch, Assistant County Manager, Brittany Lopez, and Nikki from the Clerk's Office. Our minutes from November 28th, 2023, West Erda Improvement District Meeting Minutes. Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
2023, huh?
If not, then Chair, entertain a motion for approval. Or Chair, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Hearing a motion to approve from Councilman Hoffman. Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second from Councilman Thomas. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those that may oppose, say nay. Sounds unanimous, the group that's here. That'll bring us down to electing the Chair.
Do you think Wardle could handle this one?
Well, you got one for him, don't you? Is that your motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion unless you really want it.
It doesn't matter. I'm happy to do it if that's what you guys want.
I just don't want it.
Okay. So I hear a motion from Councilman Hoffman to nominate Councilman Wardle.
I will second, proudly second that motion.
Hearing a second. All those in favor, oh, is there any other nominations? Okay, all those in favor of nominating and electing Councilman Scott Wardle to Chair the West Erda Improvement District, say aye for 2025.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I guess. We'll make that unanimous. Okay. That, all, everybody voted. Any opposing it? No? Okay, that'll bring us down to Resolution 2024-01, adopting the fiscal year of 2025 final budget. Allison McCoy.
All right, Council, this budget is a zero budget. The West Erda Improvement District, the functions of it are actually managed by SPID, but due to some arrangements that we have, we have to keep it open, but I just need to have you approve this zero budget.
Thank you.
Can they do anything with a zero budget?
They don't need to.
There's no spending or bonding out for that.
I think we give them a dollar, and that's like a million percent increase.
Looks like we need to have a public hearing, so Chair, entertain a motion to open up public hearing. Chair, still waiting for a motion.
So moved.
Hearing, thank you, hearing a motion from Councilman Thomas, and a second from Councilman Strunberg. All those in favor, open up public hearing, say aye. Aye. All those that may oppose, say nay. Public hearing is now open. Is there anybody in the audience, by raise of hand, that would like to speak to Resolution 2024-01, adopting the fiscal year of 2025 final budget for the Erda, the West Erda Improvement District? Seeing none, Chair, entertain a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Hearing a motion from Councilman Strunberg. Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second from Councilman Hoffman. All those in favor of closing public hearing, say aye. Aye. All those that may oppose, that's unanimous. Then that would turn around and say, for approval or for a motion for Resolution 2024-01, Chair, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Hearing a motion for approval from Councilman Thomas. Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second from Councilman Hoffman. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those that may oppose, say nay. That passes Resolution 2024-01, passes. Chair, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Hearing a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those that may oppose, say nay. We are adjourned at 6:17.
Recording stopped.
We really have to do three minutes. Yep. Good job. He caught us back up. This is the same thing.
It was Eric, as the Chair, that slowed us down, and as I was the Chair of this one, then we caught back up. Poor Eric.
Eric, don't take that from him. You should nominate him to be Chairman of the next.
Wait, Hoffman's on one tonight.
Are we doing, is it Desert Peak next?
Yeah, it's a really busy one, too.
Yeah, yeah. Jared, I think I'm, I'm pulling that one up. I think I saw it as Jared, so do you want to mind running that one as well?
Okay. It's down here to start at 6:20, so we got two minutes. No, twiddling thumbs. Hey, well, I'm ready when you are, Brittany.
Recording in progress.
Welcome, everyone. I will be conducting this meeting under the direction of Eric Strunberg as the Chair. This is the Desert Peak Special Service District. We are, it is December 3rd, 2024. It is 6:20 PM. We are located at the County Building on the third floor in the Council Chambers. As far as roll call, we have our County Attorney, Scott Broadhead. We have, as, as far as Councilman, Councilman Thomas, Councilman Hamner, Councilman Hoffman, Councilman Strunberg is online. We have Councilman Wardle, who is excused. We have our County Manager, Andy Welch, and Brittany Lopez from the County Manager's Office, and Nikki, thank you for being here from the Clerk's Office. We recognize a lot of people out in the audience. Thank you for being here. First item to vote on is our minutes. That is the November 28th, 2023 Desert Peak Service, Special Service District Meeting Minutes. Is there any corrections or additions to these minutes? If not, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Hearing a motion to approve from Councilman Thomas, and a second from Councilman Strunberg. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those that may oppose, say nay. Sounds unanimous. Those minutes are approved. Elect Chairman. We'll now open it up for nominations to elect Chairman for the 2025 Desert Peaks Special Service District. Is there any nominations? Hearing a motion from Councilman Thomas for Eric Strunberg. Eric, you're good with that?
That's fine.
Thank you. Is there any other nominations? Not? Let's vote. For Eric, all those in favor of Eric Strunberg being the Chair for 2025, say aye. Aye.
Do we need a second? I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Hoffman, excuse me. Motion from Councilman Thomas, I'm struggling today. Second from Councilman Hoffman for Eric Strunberg to be the Chair for 2025. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those that may oppose, say nay. It is approved. That will bring up our County Auditor for the Resolution 2024-01, adopting the fiscal year of 2025 final budget. Allison McCoy.
All right, Council, for the Desert Peak Special Service District, the budget is zero. This is just a formality as well for this one. This isn't a functioning special service district, but we do have to adopt a budget for it, so.
Thank you. That will bring up a public hearing, so entertain a motion to open up public hearing.
So moved.
Hearing a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a motion from Councilman Hoffman, second from Councilman Strunberg. All those in favor, open up public hearing, say aye. Aye. Public hearing is now open for the fiscal year of 2025 Desert Peak Special Service District. Is there anyone in the audience, by raise of hand, that would like to speak specifically to this subject? Seeing none, entertain a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Hearing a motion from Councilman Hoffman. Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second from Councilman Strunberg. All those in favor of closing public hearing for the Desert Peak Special Service District of the fiscal year of 2025, say aye. Aye. All those that may oppose, say nay. Now close. Chair, Chair, entertain a motion for approval of the Resolution 2024-01, adopting the fiscal year for 2025.
Motion to approve Resolution 2024-01.
Hearing a motion from Councilman Strunberg to, for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second from Councilman Thomas. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those that may oppose, say nay. Sounds unanimous. Chair, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Hearing a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. We are adjourned. It is 6:24.
Recording stopped.
Say what?
Well, we just need people from the public to make, have some comments.
Really? You get a break?
I guess. I need to get back to college, but I don't know if I was prepared for that, so I don't hope it's not permitted. For me, anyone says it's permitted, just like State Code says. All, all, all use of residential uses, or all uses of residential or something like that.
Let's see, it's now six thirty. Is it, or Nikki, is we all good to go? It's six thirty, and we're now convening the redevelopment agency meeting.
Recording in progress.
And it's being held at the Council Chambers at forty-seven South Main. This meeting is for the redevelopment agency. I'm Kendall Thomas, and I'll chair the.